Am I unmuted now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
So this is the special city council meeting, 2020, at 2:30 PM in the afternoon. We will take a moment just a silent prayer for our invocation today. And we will call the meeting to order. City secretary will call the roll, please.
Mayor Gloria Ligon.
Here.
May I approach Nancy Britner?
Here.
Councilmember Aurora LaBrune.
Here.
Councilmember Brenton Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Shield. Councilmember Vicky Alvor.
Here.
And we have a quorum to proceed. We will go to public comments. And I have Ray Don Tilly, who's requested to speak. Do you care to speak at this time or at the agenda item? Is Ray Don there? Is Ray Don Tilly available?
He is. He's on there, so.
I'll come back on Ray Don. Is Ray Don available?
He needs to unmute himself.
You need to unmute yourself? Can he hear me? Well, one of you give him a call, please, and I'll go on to Jeff Rasko.
Okay, I got Bill's panelists, man. He's on there.
Is Jeff Rasko available?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Would you like to go forward with your public comment?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor, member to the city council, and especially Wood Creek citizens of Cypress Point. My name is Jeff Rasko, and we live at 164 Augusta Drive. I am speaking to the budget and a proposed capital project on page four of the budget proposal for $150,000 in street improvements for Wood Creek Drive Cypress Point Drive Extension. When Monica and I moved to Wood Creek 24 years ago, there was a golf course maintenance road between Jacob's Well and Augusta Drive blocked by gate. The gate was opened for emergencies and special times like rodeo. Then, out of nowhere, the road was paved and the gate opened full-time. Our quiet, dead-end street became a speedway. From now, now from what we understand, the city is proposing $150,000 to improve a utility and golf maintenance road from Cypress Point to Doolittle. Again, apparently using the city treasury to put a public road on property not zoned for it, and likely not public property. And again, just a few, and again, just a future city council vote away from opening the gate at the rear of Cypress Point permanently to through traffic. Citizens of Cypress Point and the Doolittle area, I don't, don't think it won't happen to you. Camp Young Judea and residents in the area receive heavy traffic on those roads at times, both in terms of tonnage and numbers. It would often be more convenient to go through Cypress Point than Wood Creek and Brook Hollow. People enjoy the convenience of a shortcut, but their convenience does not trump your safety, quiet environment, and property value. Please be careful what you wish for. We speak from painful experience. If you're worried about flood safety, there are far less expensive and permanent solutions than spending $150,000 to put a public roadway on private property. We fought hard, presented solid evidence on loss of safety and property values, and got LaRocca Lane closed again for a dozen years. And you know what? The city did not collapse. Traffic decreased dramatically, and everybody just went about their business. But after the Brook Hollow construction was completed, instead of closing the gate again as promised by the mayor and council, backroom deals were done and the gate was opened again. We invite you to come sit in our driveway and witness the results. We'll even supply the cold beverages. Our disaster can become yours too, Cypress Point. Mayor and city council, please don't do to the citizens of Cypress Point, Doolittle, and Wildwood what was done to Augusta, Brook Hollow, and Brook Meadow. Make some reasonable improvements so Cypress Point citizens can escape emergencies. Mandate that gate never be opened except during emergencies, and put that $150,000 to better use, like parks over pavement. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Councilmember Shield has joined the meeting and has his hand raised. You may just want to be acknowledged that he's joining the meeting.
Yes, we acknowledge that you are present. Councilmember Shield. And you need to unmute yourself? Can you hear me?
No.
All right, so I'm going back to public comments for Ray Don Tilly. If Ray Don Tilly is available now? And you need to unmute yourself, please?
Okay, I think I've done that.
Bill Shield has Ray Don Tilly. You have the floor. We're checking on Ray Don Tilly's phone to be unmuted, please. Can we go ahead and then see if we can contact Ray Don? Call back and then? All right, is Ray Don Tilly available?
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. I am happy to have this chance to speak to you.
Can you speak up a little?
Yes, I'm happy to have this chance to to address the council today. I am concerned that $150,000. I'm concerned that $150,000.
So has Ray Don Tilly left the meeting, or is he still available? We're going to go on with the meeting, but we will come back and give Ray Don an opportunity to speak if we can clear up the issue with his phone. Thank you. So we'll go to the regular agenda discussion and take appropriate action on the revised budget calendar for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And I will turn that over to Brenton Lewis at this time, just for his comments.
Okay. You do have the revised budget calendar. As you know, we are in the current budget workshop for July 15. We will receive our certified role president on live media. And then the next meeting, which we'll be asking, unless the council wants to hold a meeting between now and August 12, will be the next date for the budget workshop. And also, holding the public hearings on the budget and the proposed tax rate. Then September 9, unless council wants another budget workshop in between the 12th and September 9, that will be when the final decision will be on the document for the budget. We'll hold the public hearing on the tax rate. Vote to amend the 2019, 2020 budget if necessary, and then vote to adopt the budget and vote to adopt the tax rate. So that is the schedule we have at this time. We need to have a meeting and have more meetings. Get both in between those dates.
So do we have any discussion? Do you have a motion on this?
Yes, he's got her hand raised.
Councilmember, Councilmember Britner.
When Mr. Lewis was presenting that information, it was like an echo chamber. I only picked up half of it, and someone spoke over him. There was some interference, so I, I have no idea what he said.
Me too.
Councilmember Britner, you have the floor, and you need to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry?
I am unmuted. I am unmuted. I'm, I am unmuted too.
I can hear you, Nancy.
She's in show. She's muted.
I am un, it says you are unmuted. Everybody can hear me.
I can hear you. I can hear you, Nancy. I heard the whole thing.
Okay, when Brenton, when Brenton was giving his presentation, his comments, he was, sounded like an echo chamber. I could not understand everything he said as far as dates or anything. If you could repeat that, Mr. Lewis, I'd appreciate it. Maybe repeat it slower so that the echo chamber has time to stop before we can hear you. There's evidently a, a sound problem.
Yeah, right. I, I compare, and there is a delay. There's a delay between what we're picking and what you see. Linda, can you hear me?
Can we? Can you all hear me?
Okay, can everyone hear me?
Much better.
All right.
All right, so do you want to go?
Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes.
Brenton?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Oh, she's coming in.
All right, we're, we can hear you now.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
I think we have too many computers in the office.
They're moving, they're moving those away in, in different sections of the city hall so that they won't interfere.
Trial and error. Yes.
If you can hear me, put up your, okay, Brenton, okay, all right. Hey, y'all, let me get centered on the horns. Okay, all right, so on the budget workshops, we did have the revised budget and rate calendar that's being presented. We are in the July 15 meeting at this time, and staff will be asking to have a vote to set the date for the budget hearing, proposed budget hearing, and also the proposed tax rate. Then, the next time the council will meet, unless you want additional budget workshops, will be on August 12. And that will be when we will hold a public hearing on the budget and also hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Then, there'll be a vote on the proposed tax rate so that that will be what will be published. And then at the September 9 meeting, unless council wants additional meetings, will be a budget workshop if needed. And we will, at that time, present the filed decision documents, so you will see what the budget is from all the other budget workshops. We'll hold the public hearing on the tax rate. If then we need to amend the 2019, 2020 budget, that will be when that vote will be held. And then there will be a vote to adopt the budget and then vote to adopt the tax rate. Anyone have any questions?
Is this the same schedule that's already been published?
This was, we added some more hearings in there. It's, we just added one hearing in there, but it is basically the one that was presented at the last meeting.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. I can't hear myself, anyway.
We're going to talk about the budget calendar on one right now.
I understand. Can you guys just email that out to us so we can make sure we get that calendared?
Okay, it's in the, it's in the packet.
The packet for today?
Yes.
It's in your packet for today.
Okay, I believe you. I'm looking at it, but okay, that sounds good. Do we have the opportunity to ask questions about specific budget items today, or do we need to defer that?
Yes, we will go into, I'll bring up. We will be asking this.
Excuse me, Brenton, we're going to be going into the budget workshop, item two on our agenda. And then you will, plenty of discussions.
I see the calendar dates in a packet. Did you say there was a modification of that, or?
Well, the what's in the packet is the actual calendar we're proposing now.
Okay.
It was modified from the one that was presented at the last meeting.
Okay, I see it. Thank you.
Do we need to take any other action on this, Brenton?
No, there's no action required.
So we'll go to item two, the budget workshop. We'll begin the workshop, presentation, review, and discussion on the second draft of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And you also should have that in your packet.
Problem is, the packet is on the computer.
I see one hand.
On the Chromebook, and we can't access it.
Well, I am going to bring up the, I will bring up that document for you just now, as soon as I get my OneDrive going.
I just wanted to.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Bill Shield because you were speaking, so what was your comment, Councilmember Shield?
My outlook, which has the packet, is on the Chromebook, which I'm using to look at you all and communicate with you all, so I can't read the numbers in the. However, I do have it on my cellphone, but it's a little small.
Okay.
That up in a moment for you to, I believe, view. And, and Councilmember Britner, had your hand up?
I just wondered if Ray Don ever got to get on. I'm interested to hear what he has to say.
Well, we will try him again. He has not gotten back on yet, but we will try him. Okay, actually, let me ask Councilmember Pullay had his hand up, but I believe Ray Don is on, so we, would you like to speak now, Councilmember Pullay? Shall we get Ray Don? Ray Don?
I'm fine. I'm okay.
Okay. You need to unmute yourself, Ray Don. And then? Ray Don, are you on the line now?
Yes, I heard him.
You have the floor.
Wonderful, thank you. I just wanted to take a few moments here to say that as a runner, I, I run the neighborhood frequently, and so I get to know the roads pretty well underfoot. And I made a point of running through the Cypress Point neighborhood just to see how things are. And I'm really puzzled, and I think the citizens of Wood Creek need a more detailed explanation of where this $150,000 is coming from, what the particular repairs are. I understand there's an extension, but I don't understand the need for the extension. And so I think that is something that, that really needs a lot more elaboration for the citizens. I think that $150,000 should instead, as I mentioned last, be spent on the Augusta Park Playground equipment that was budgeted last year and not spent, that $35,000. There is $30,000 that I think we should be spending on park projects, which is a doubling of last year's unsent budget. I think there is another $35,000 to be spent on trails for pedestrians because we need that for safety of people in the neighborhood. We allocated $15,000 last year. We should be able to bump that to $35,000. We do need the $49,800 for communications that I suggested last time. And finally, just to save some time, I will get to the final point, which is Zoom communications. For $200, we could have a very trusty video meeting system that would not have all of these feedback problems. And one last thing, just to make the budget, but I just want to say one more time, it would be good for us to fix our ordinances to allow for Victory Gardens and Backyard Hens. The time for food security is now. Thanks.
That's me.
I can hear everybody.
Okay.
Gloria, you're muted.
I'm unmuted now.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have the floor, Councilmember Alvor.
I was just mentioning that you were muted and we couldn't hear you.
Thank you. Are you, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, it's gone.
No.
Okay.
You're back.
Okay, now, Vicky Alvor, you have the floor.
No.
No, I was just trying to tell you sometime ago that you were muted. And maybe that's been worked out by now, but thank you.
Cannot hear the mayor.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So are there any other items or any discussion on item two of the workshop, review and discussion on this second draft proposal? There being none, we'll go to item three. Oh, I see a way.
I do have a question. Under, under row, we had discussed last budget about getting the payments straight. Have we made any headway on that for this year versus having to use the money on next year's budget?
Yes, we have got the Stop Head Stencils in now, and we are working with the Camp Young Judea to have one of some of their employees, if we can't get our part-time person to do the work, that they will be providing the labor for us, and we'll be reimbursing them for that.
So that we can start this project and have it done before next, so it won't affect next year's budget?
Correct.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Pullay, did you still have a comment? You have the floor.
You're muted.
Will you unmute yourself, please?
It shows I've been unmuted.
I think this is the challenge. I'm going back to the telephones.
I was going to say, is there a way we can stop this and immediately go into a teleconference? This is ridiculous. Crazy.
But we should have everybody unmuted.
We're showing Brent is unmuted.
He's showing unmuted.
Are you there, Brent?
I, I think Nancy, since we have a total of two citizens who even called in about this meeting, that we could probably manage to kind of rough through it one time while we try to work out technology.
It's, it's interesting, to say the least.
Yeah, I don't know about ridiculous, but you know, people are trying.
Oh, I know, it's kind of fun. We lost Aurora, though.
Yeah, where'd Aurora go? No, Brent's leaving.
Now we don't have a forum.
No, I think.
We still have a forum because he's still there. Let me, yeah, I'm, I'm being blocked from my own accounting.
Yay, here's Aurora. Hey, finally.
So could we go over Brent Pullay would like to be, or do you all want to just move on?
I want to hear Brent, but can you talk? Brent? Can you hear us?
He can't seem to unmute himself, so I don't know.
He can hear us, but he, we can't hear him.
Let's go on, and he can, we'll come back to his comments. So we need to set a date and a time. Vicky, go ahead.
Yes, Brent, you could chat with us. You could do a chat. If you see on the right side of your screen, there's the, the participants, and then right below it, there's a little bubble thingy. You could actually write in a chat as a comment, since we can't hear you.
Why can't we hear him? You mean the picture of the computer on the little screen? Vicky?
Oh, right in the middle, right by Brent's head. There's. There's.
Oh, I don't, I don't have that then.
Okay. Do you not have a list of participants on the right side?
Uh-uh.
Oh, okay. Huh.
Oh, I see.
He's saying one minute.
It's like a cartoon bubble?
Yes, right, but if you have that little cartoon bubble, if you click the cartoon bubble, then right at the bottom of the screen, the bottom right corner, you can type in a comment, and we can all see it.
I feel shunned, I can't, I don't have a cartoon bubble. Oh, he's writing something down. Yay.
Uh-oh.
Put it down.
Lower.
Lower.
That's it.
Why can't we get him unmuted?
He has to do it on his end.
Can somebody call him and tell him to unmute? I mean, that's.
I think he tried, because he wasn't muted.
He can hear, he can hear us, we can't hear him.
Right.
He's not unmuted.
Hey, Carol. Hello, no, I thought, I thought, I thought it was pretty hello, everybody. I hope we know better than this. Yeah, to fix my hair.
Hello? Brent?
Yeah, Brent's got a.
I think he's calling.
Well, he can't.
Good to see you.
So we're looking at, while we're waiting for Brent, we're just looking at setting a date and a time for a public hearing on the proposed budget.
Yes. And we are, we are recommending the regular, the August 12th date, that is the scheduled regular meeting day, since it is the second Tuesday of the month, or second Wednesday of the month. And we just need, would recommend to have council decide what time they would actually want to have the public hearings held.
Are we going to be able to meet in person for that meeting?
That's up to the council.
Then, I, if our meeting would be scheduled, say, for example, at 5:45, we should have the, start maybe at 5:30 and have a public meeting then. I don't think the public meeting will last that long, do you? I don't know how to figure the timeframe.
Well, it would depend on how long you wanted to take public comments, and also review the budget too, again.
Would we have our regular meeting then, and then do the budget after the meeting?
It would be included in the budget workshop, or, it would be, the public hearings would be included in the regular meeting.
So we need to have a workshop prior to that meeting?
Or within that, within the meeting.
What's the question?
One day, one day, one time.
And we're ready to go, August 12th.
Just in August 12th, accomplishing the task of the date and time for the public hearing on the budget. And we are having a special regular meeting on August 12th, regular date, that we would plan to have a meeting, if we were on a regular schedule. And if we keep that date and time, we would do the 5:45, and we would accomplish the public hearing within that meeting as a workshop.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
We need a motion to set both of the public hearings.
Yes.
I move that we have the, I move that we have the public meeting, the first public meeting on August 12th, 5:45.
I second it.
All righty. And then the, we need a roll call vote.
The motion is to do the public hearing, to set the date and time for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, for August 12th at 5:45 p.m. Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Britner?
Yes.
Council member Aurora LeBrun?
Yes.
Council member Brent Pullay? He nodded his head and gave us an okay sign.
Yes.
Council member Vicky Alboard?
Yes.
And the motion carries, so that meeting will be on August 12th at 5:45, and the place will be determined, Nancy, in response to your question.
Okay.
Four, and we got a message from council member Pullay to move on the agenda, that he was agreeing to do so. Item four, this is to take appropriate action on setting a date and a time for public hearing on the proposed tax rate. Brenton, what are you suggesting there?
I'm suggesting the same date, just to vote right, right after the public hearing on the proposed budget.
So. I need a motion.
I would, I would recommend at least, make it at least at 5:50 or 5:55.
I so move.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Vicky first, yeah. Seconded by council member Alboard, she had her hand up first. Five, the 12th, August the 12th, at 5:55, I believe, Brenton said, just said it.
Yes.
After the other hearing. And we need to take a roll call.
Okay, so the motion to do the public hearing to set the tax rate for the budget would be August 12th at 5:55 p.m. Mayor Pro Tem Britner?
Yes.
Council member Aurora LeBrun?
Yes.
Council member Brent Pullay? He's nodding his head and saying yes. Council member Bill Shield?
Yes.
Yes. Council member Vicky Alboard?
Yes.
The motion carries, and we are adjourned.
Hang on.
And we're adjourned.
Bye.
Thank you.
I will do that on Friday, or Monday, or next week.